Members of the Board of Trustees, please respond present when you hear your name. Chairperson Thompson.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Schwartz.
Present, I was on mute, I apologize.
No problem.
Not at all.
Trustee Arvinides.
I believe he's absent and excused.
Trustee Henry.
He said he just can't find the number. I'm sorry, he just asked me that he couldn't find the number, so I'm sending it back though.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, great.
Trustee Berger.
Present.
Trustee Clark, we don't think so yet. Trustee Cortez Vasquez.
Present.
Trustee Ferrer.
Here.
Trustee Kim. Texting.
Here.
Trustee Lanaris Garcia.
Present.
Trustee Mojica.
Present.
Trustee Obergefell.
Present.
Trustee O'Donnell Torme.
Present.
Trustee Shorter. We heard him before, but we can come back. Trustee Sunshine.
Present.
Trustee Wilkin.
Present.
Trustee Burke.
Present.
And Trustee Hunter. Okay, and Trustee Arvinides, did you just join?
I just joined, present.
Great, thanks. And Trustee Shorter, are you still muted?
He just off mute.
Yeah.
Hear me? Yes.
Hello? Yes, now we can hear you, yep. And Trustee Sunshine, are you?
He said yes already.
Yep, okay, great.
I'm here, I'm here.
Got it. You have a call, Bill.
Okay, this public special board meeting of the City University of New York Board of Trustees is now called to order. On March 7th, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202 declaring a state of emergency in response to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 13th, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202.1 which includes a suspension of law allowing the attendance of meetings telephonically or other similar service. Article 7 of the Public Officers' Law to the extent necessary to permit anybody, any public body, to meet and take such actions authorized by the law without permitting in public, in-person access to meetings and authorizing such meetings to be held remotely by conference call or similar service provided that the public has the ability to view or listen to such proceedings and that such meetings are recorded and later transcribed. In accordance with the executive order, this board meeting is being held via teleconference with a live stream found at the CUNY Board of Trustees website as well as on CUNY TV, Channel 75. A copy of the calendar is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Additional items may be added during the meeting. As a reminder, please mute your phones so we can ensure that everyone can hear. And let me ask the secretary to take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery.
So, members of the Chancellor, you just respond present when you hear your name. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez.
Present.
General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs, Derek Davis.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Cruz.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Batista.
Present.
And Senior Vice Chancellor for Institutional Affairs, Strategic Advancement and Special Counsel, Grace.
Present.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Given that all board members are participating remotely, I'll read the resolution and ask some members to respond only if you'd like to abstain or oppose the item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes vote. If you're voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name first for the record and let's try to avoid speaking over each other. I'm gonna start with the item, I'm gonna introduce it, get it on the calendar, and then I'm gonna go to the Chancellor first to start our conversation on this. Item number one is the City University of New York approval of a special COVID-19 temporary suspension of standardized testing requirements for undergraduate admission. Do I have a second for this item?
Berger, second.
Okay. Now, let's go to the Chancellor to start our discussion on this. Chancellor?
Thank you, Chair Thompson. We, many of you are aware of the great challenges that the COVID-19 pandemic has caused on the college board and the companies that do some of the standardized testing such as the SAT and the ACT. Exams have been needing to be canceled, dates for exams have been canceled and postponed, attempts to do some of the exams on online format have also not been altogether successful. The concerns of many students and parents about the having their kids be in a testing site without the proper precautions to ensure their safety while they could be taking an exam. Examples of students who might be signing up for exams across borders to be able to make the deadlines. We think that the appropriate way to proceed given this COVID-19 crisis to be supportive of all these incoming students that we will be getting at CUNY would be to do like many other universities, university systems have done, is to temporarily suspend the use of the standardized testing as an admission requirement in the admission cycle of, that would include the Spring '21 semester, the Fall '21 semester, and the Spring '22 semester. Hopefully, at the end of that, we'll be in a post-vaccine world and there'll be the regularity of this test being offered and then we'll go back to a regular set of admission requirements. So, we're just asking for a temporary halt for the cycle that would include the Spring '21, Fall '21, and Spring '22 semesters. And this is consistent with even what the testing companies have been suggesting and some of the professional associations of school guidance counselors and others associated with this. So, that's the main rationale and what the resolution will do.
So, just to make that clear, this is a one-time, not permanent action on the part of this board, and that's the request that you're making?
Absolutely. Yep.
All right, I know that, would you want to go to the Provost at this point for additional comments or let me first ask?
Well, I mean, I don't, so...
Okay, let me first, before you do that, let me first ask my colleagues, you know, if they have questions, before you go to the Provost, if they have questions.
I don't have a question.
Martin Burke, question?
One at a time and let's identify ourselves first. Was that Martin? And then Lorraine?
That was me, yes.
Okay.
I'll refer to...
Lorraine, I'm sorry, go ahead, Martin.
I'll just turn to Lorraine.
Okay, Lorraine.
So...
Lorraine, please.
Okay, thank you, Martin. I would like to use this opportunity, if this is a one-time period, I would like us to see, to really monitor and to assess and evaluate the results of this one-time period to see if we would like to do this moving forward since many colleges are moving away from this. I know that there'll be some debate about this, but I'm not proposing it, I am asking for the proposition to evaluate and to determine, to use this opportunity as a test and a pilot and so that we can make informed decisions in the future.
The only thing I would say is let, instead of, obviously, we want to see this monitored and see the outcomes. At the same point, I wouldn't describe this as a pilot. I would say it is important to monitor the outcomes and to be able to look at any changes, but I don't think we want to view this as a pilot. I think we want to view this right off the bat. So, I'd agree with you, Lorraine, it needs to be monitored, we need to be able to see results, but I don't want to necessarily, at this point, because then that's a longer debate. If we use the word pilot, it's a longer debate, different conversation.
Absolutely. I defer to your change, I did not express it as part of the issue, sir.
No, no, not at all. I think we are in agreement.
But I would like, I would like an evaluation and assessment process to be attached to this.
Agreed.
Well, the data, we'll have the data available as a result of whatever outcomes, right, come out as a result of the admission cycle. So, we have that available for any use that the Board of Others might decide that is appropriate for that use.
Okay.
Thank you.
Martin?
Thank you. Father Felo or Jose Luis, since the SATs and to a lesser degree the ACTs work not only for the admissions process but as part of the PI for, and for members of the Board, that is proficiency requirements, how does the Chancellery see proficiency requirements working in this cycle since one of the other legs of the proficiency requirements, the New York State Regents' exams have also been suspended? Quite simply, how do you go on since the SAT was scheduled from 2020 to be a new part of the proficiency index?
So, I'll have Jose Luis go in a bit more detail about the plans to make up for that situation and others that might come up as a result of the temporary change. I also want to contextualize this by saying that we need to remember that roughly about 40% of our new freshmen are not impacted by this directly, right, because we don't use that as part of the requirements for the community colleges. And two-thirds of the incoming students in our senior colleges are transferred, right? So, this really applies to that one-third of the new freshmen in our four-year schools. I want to be able to also put that out for context, but maybe Jose Luis can talk a little bit about the technical side of some of the things that Martin brings up in his question.
Thank you, Chancellor, and thank you, Marty. It's a very important question. Our intent is, once the Board acts on this resolution, to move to the development of an implementation plan that will be widely consulted with the campuses and our faculty colleagues. The implementation plan will look at a menu of information that we have available for our freshmen, given that 80% of our freshmen come from the Department of Education and our information systems are tightly connected. So, we not only have access to, say, the GTA of a student, but also very detailed information on which courses they took, how they performed, and then correlations with, through analytics, with how those metrics correlate with success during their first year in school. So, to your point that we would not only be, would have the SAT absent from the tools that we can use to try to predict success at a CUNY senior college from our freshmen, we may also be at a disadvantage in terms of Regents' scores. On the other hand, we will be able to look deeper into the students' transcripts to identify data points that will help make up for that. So, we're hopeful that in the next several weeks, we will be able to devise a framework for decision-making and then allow the campuses to, within that framework, develop the standards that would guide the recommendation engine of our application system.
The other thing that I would add to Jose Luis's comments too is that the COVID crisis would also control monkey rent, because one of the things that we are trying to prevent is that we could actually end up with a large number of students who do not have any SAT scores or ACT scores at all because they've not been able to just to sit down to take one such test. So, you know, we could end up with potentially a large number of students that just do not have any of that data available.
This is Charlie. I have a question for the Chancellor and the Provost. This resolution says it's temporary for the periods mentioned, Fall of '21, Spring, et cetera. But my question is, during those three semesters, this period of time, does that mean that the Chancellor and his team have the ability to suspend this resolution or not implement it if in fact the results are not positive? Can this be, this temporary resolution also have temporary time limit on it?
Temporary, I think it's limited to the...
I know, the three semesters. But what I'm asking is, during that period of time, will you have the ability to suspend this or to reinstitute it if you find that it is not working?
No.
Because that, Lorraine...
Charlie?
I don't have that authority. I mean, that would be something you'll have to come back to the Board.
Exactly. I was just gonna say that if there is, and one would expect that there is a monitoring, you know, following up on, you know, Trustee Cortez Vasquez's comment. And I'm sure you all would like to see regular reports, you know, obviously, if you look at the end of the semester, you'd like to see reports on that. But to make any changes to the suspension and resolution, it would have to come back to the Board.
No, exactly, no, I understand.
Clearly, we'd like to see, we would like to see information reported back to the Board on a periodic basis. Obviously, you'd have to look at the end of semesters to be able to track that and to come back to the Board. So, I mean, that would be, any suspension would have to, any suspension of this resolution would have to come back to the Board.
No, exactly, I do understand that.
But it would be the Chancellor and the Provost who would bring it back to us.
Absolutely.
It goes to Lorraine's point, by the way.
Yep, absolutely.
Chair Thompson?
It was well made.
Chair Thompson?
It was an excellent point, yes.
This, Kevin Kim, first, I just want to emphasize, I think, Trustee Cortez Vasquez's point that we should take this unique opportunity to evaluate and monitor the statistics of all the students coming in. And then to Trustee Shorter's point, I guess, part of that question is, if, let's say miraculously there's a vaccine that's discovered and implemented and testing kind of resumes normally, the Spring 2021 semester, when do applications need to be in for that particular semester? That's a question for the Chancellor, I guess, yeah.
That's pretty soon, because that's...
End of the year.
They'd be applying this semester for the spring.
Yes.
Um, I'm sorry, Fall 2021 is still the same as well? They would be applying by the end of this year for Fall 2021, correct?
Yep.
Okay, got it.
Or, let me just, let me just question on my part then. Fall '21, people are applying up through, wouldn't it be February or so? I mean, I know, obviously, through the end of this year, but...
My best answer would be, you know, when we get to the fabulous place of a post-vaccine world, we'll be having conversations about a whole range of things that would potentially be different, right? So, I, I mean, my sense would be to say that, you know, when we get there, if we need to revisit something, you know, let's say that could affect the Spring 2022, right, which would be sort of the outlier, we can do that.
Mm-hmm.
Got it, okay. And then, is this an appropriate time to propose an amendment to this resolution?
Uh, yes. I mean, well, we'll tell you what, before you do that, I'd just like to go back to other questions first and then right after that, Kevin, definitely.
Sure.
Thank you, Bill. Bill, this is Barry Schwartz. I'm delighted to hear that there will be evaluations and monitoring, and my question's directed to the Chancellor and the Provost. What do you contemplate to be the metrics of success or not of what it is we're being asked to approve over this period of time?
Well, I, my, this is really an accommodation to thousands of students who may or may not have the chance to take the exam, right? And like most of higher ed, this has been a tool that has been used. You could be in a scenario when you have, you know, hundreds of thousands of applications that do not have that information, right? So, this is in part an accommodation to those students, not to be forcing them or inviting them, put their health at risk by wanting to sit for an exam, right, in conditions that might not be healthy, and encourage them to continue to apply to us, because actually, if we didn't do this, we could be at a disadvantage because pretty much everybody else has moved to a similar scenario, right?
By the way, could everybody else mute, mute their phones because we're getting a lot of feedback on the call? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chancellor, go ahead.
So, for me, in a way, it's first a sign of care to the students that would be admitting about thinking about the conditions that they're facing and not wanting to expose them to additional risk. It is also part enrollment, if pretty much most other university and systems out there have had some kind of accommodation to the SAT and the ACT and we don't, the students who have not been able to take the exam might decide that they don't want to apply to CUNY. So, I mean, that for me, the basic drivers behind this decision.
No, I understand that, and I'm supportive of what's been proposed as a result of that. My question relates to, over this period of time, it's been said that there will be evaluations and monitoring, and my question is, what will the metrics of success or not be with respect to those evaluations and monitoring? That's what I'm a little confused about.
Well, I would have to ask the Board about what would they like to evaluate. I mean, in some ways, it would be a highly irregular admissions cycle, right? So, I mean, the, you know, you have to take with caution whatever lessons learned from the period would be, right, in my opinion. And then the other element would be the, if the criteria that we select, right, once we have the students, as we follow them in their journeys through CUNY, do we learn anything about that methodology that might be helpful as we think about other things in the future? But that'd be my best take at your question.
This is Jill. I just would wonder, wouldn't you be comparing the cohort that would come in the first semester under these new rules and compare their success versus prior years where we used the SAT to see was proficiency down, did they perform as well as the cohorts from years before when we used SAT as an indicator? Wouldn't you have to compare it to prior years like that?
We could, but, I mean, without wanting to get into a lengthy methodological conversation, right, you could also argue that it was a very unusual year, you know, given all the conditions. So, we could make that, and that can be something to look at, right, and that'd be easily done because we have all the data. If that's something the Board wanted to take a look at, we can easily provide that information. I do think that we need to navigate with care, right, because of just the uniqueness of all the things that would be around this African, this group of students that would be getting.
You know, what, I'm sorry, this is Bill Thompson. What might make sense also is the criteria, you're gonna do a process in conversation or in answer to Martin's question earlier, you're gonna go through a process, a consultative process and speaking to others and putting together, you know, a number and looking at a lot of this. It probably would be helpful after those conversations to circulate the criteria that are gonna be used, and I think that was either your comment or Jose Luis's comment.
Yep.
To circulate the criteria that are gonna be used to be able to do the review. And I think then to circulate that with us, I mean, that would be helpful for us to be able to take a look at how evaluations are gonna be made. And I think that's just, after you go through that other process, it would be great to circulate and get the input from others, be great to circulate that with us also.
And Bill, this is Barry again. To go to Jill's point, I think a comparison of retention rates for this group over this period of time compared to other groups would be interesting to note.
Yeah. I mean, all those things are, you know, easy, you know, at the end of this temporary moment or throughout, any questions the Board might have, luckily, we have the data. I mean, the retention data, you have to wait a little bit, right, to be able to have that. And, but we'll have it available, so we could go into this in any way that the Board will have interest. I just said that, we always have to sort of keep in mind that even things like retention, right, given the, where we might be with public health, where we might be with the economy, you'll have to always treat it with some care when you compare it to other moments in time. That'd be my only thing, but we'll have the data and whatever information the Board might require at the end of this temporary process or throughout, ready to make it available.
And if I may, this is Jose Luis, I would just add to the Chancellor's point and some of the issues raised by the trustees, that we have world-class institutional researchers. We are very fortunate that that is the case. And to Lorraine's original question, we will endeavor to ensure that as we develop the implementation process, we have a robust assessment plan in place with key performance indicators and controls that will allow us to make a meaningful assessment and comparisons. It's like the Chancellor said, the economic situation is very different than last year. The living conditions of our students is very different than last year. The structural modalities, being mostly online versus in-person in the past, will have to factor in. But our colleagues in the Office of Institutional Research and Assessment are very versed in creating control groups and providing us with meaningful data, and we'll be happy to circulate that as it becomes available.
Excellent.
And to Jose Luis, we can also see how it played out in other institutions that are comparable to us, you know, we'll have a chance to do that too.
Exactly.
Other questions?
Well, Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, after having read the resolution carefully, this is a resolution that aims to respond to the COVID-19 emergency and not put candidates for admission to any of our CUNY colleges at risk. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
And it's a temporary measure, is that correct?
Yep. Okay.
Other questions before I go to Trustee Kim? Okay, Trustee Kim, you had an amendment?
Yes, so, I just want to reiterate how, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Somebody has a question.
Yes.
This is Trustee Clark, I just want to register my attendance at the meeting.
Oh, thank you, Trustee. Oh, by the way, just to double check also, is Trustee Hunter on?
Yeah, I'm present, I'm sorry I was a little bit late.
No, no, not at all, actually, just wanted to double check, thank you. All right. And thank you both for letting us know that you've been there. Trustee Kim, your amendment?
Thank you. My amendment, first, I just wanted to emphasize that I'm fully supportive of this resolution. It really addresses the health and care of our students, and so this is an important resolution we're passing today. My amendment just has to deal with asking for the deletion of the first sentence in the explanation section. That statement is just a, it's just repeating our core mission, and I don't think it has... That statement is just a, it's just repeating our core mission, and I don't think it has, it doesn't really add anything to our resolution. The second sentence by itself clearly explains the reason why we're taking this special vote today. I think if we keep that first sentence, I think what it does do, however, is that there's a suggestion that some people could read into the language, that a standardized testing requirement somehow stands as an obstacle to providing, to quote, "providing opportunities for all citizens of New York City, both economically and intellectually." So, my request, just to delete that first core state, core mission statement, just has to do with the fact that I don't want any suggestions publicly that the Board has any predetermined position on this admissions process issue prior to a vigorous discussion that must take place if we're going to do any changes in the future or even contemplating any changes, where we include all the stakeholders, including faculty, students, alumni, and everybody else in the CUNY community.
Okay. Chancellor, do you have any problem with the deletion of that sentence?
No.
Okay. Then, Trustee Kim, why don't you put, then what I would do then is to, is to, again, put forward item number, item number one with, you know, as amended, with the deletion of that sentence. So, I'm gonna make that motion. Do I have a second to that?
My phone, please, check it.
Okay. So, I will ask, do I have to vote that?
Yes.
So, let me have a motion, yes. Let me have a motion for, at least to add, item number one as amended. I have a first and a second. I would suggest if, unless you're opposed or have an abstention, just to remain silent. All right. Item one is added as amended. With that, hold on, let's just go to, let's have a vote now on item one as amended. We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or opposed. All right. Hearing no objection, that item is approved. There being no further business, I ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
So moved.
All right, so moved.
This motion, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your time. Thank you all so much.
Thank you all.
Take care, everybody.